Good evening, Council. It is City of Sammamish Special Meeting, 6:30 p.m., Monday, May 11, 2020. For meeting accessibility tonight pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, the city website, www.sammamish.us/news/events/tv-21/. Comcast Channel 21, that's within the City of Sammamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, to the city website or YouTube, which is youtube.com/chanucoupq-z1msudhagirlca8. And again, Comcast Channel 21 within the city. Calling the meeting to order, Mike Willoud-Rockhold.
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
And we also have some staff on the call, including interim City Manager Dave Rudat. We have Peter Eglick, Lisa Marshall, David Pyle, Melanie Anderson, and Cheryl Paston. And that is everybody.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have Mike do this again, he's getting so good at this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, the approval of the agenda.
Salute.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Seven zero. Okay, next up is public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written comment will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@sammamish.us and citycouncil@sammamish.us. Verbal comment. Up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 p.m. the day of the meeting. Phone number is 1-571-317-3122. Access code 929-348-197. Once you have joined, we'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment.
Okay, I see we have two people who have called in tonight to provide public comments. I will unmute callers in the order they join the meeting. When it is your turn, as the mayor mentioned, you will hear an automated voice say "unmuted", and then you will have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. Okay, first caller, you have three minutes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Randy Bannaker. I'm testifying on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors, and I am calling from Seattle. Wanted to express our concern with the likely extension of the moratorium. We would much prefer that you lift it. If however you choose to maintain it, we ask that you establish clarity about what projects are allowed and what projects aren't. Can a single-family home be built on a lot? Can a significant remodel be done? There's a tremendous amount of confusion in the market. We ask that you help us move forward by providing that clarity and working swiftly to end the moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, I will unmute the next caller now. Caller number two, you have three minutes.
Now, let me please put up my slide, Romero Valderrama, Sammamish. I was dismayed last week to see the City Council and past council members again publicly disparaging the city staff and city attorney and asking for yet another investigation. The inability of the council to hold itself accountable for its decisions and actions, always seeking to place blame elsewhere, is astounding. This will be the second investigation that is clearly attempting to invalidate the concurrency certificate by exploring whether staff, attorney misled the council into approving the tip and thereby allowing Phase 1 of the Town Center to pass concurrency. The first investigation, which sought to look into how the concurrency model could have resulted in the concurrency approval, is reportedly completed, but the council has not shared the conclusions with the public. Why not? The council stated the delay in reporting the results of the first investigation was to be in compliance with the governor's restrictions to confine government work to essential. How then can the council justify initiating an unnecessary moratorium and new investigation during this pandemic where only work deemed essential or COVID-related is permitted by the governor? A moratorium that several citizens last week called both unethical and illegal. This new call for another broad, ill-defined investigation appears to now claim that the council was misled by approving the tip that included Sahale and resulted in approval of a Phase 1. This is simply not true. If you watch the full hearing on July 18th, you will see the Town Center is referred to briefly and in regards to "we all supported the Town Center on council." Why was the Sahale on the list of tip projects? Council was told that if it was not listed, the city would lose millions in dollars and grants from the state and federal. Furthermore, Councilmember Ross correctly said in regards to Sahale, "The greatest error the council can make is leaving an important project off the list." Why was it rushed to get on at that meeting? Council waited to the last days by the Washington State mandate to vote on the tip. As Councilmember Stewart stated, "We dissed this to ourselves." Why was Sahale controversial? The fix would only allow 32 cars more, noticeable difference to commuters, and would be a minimum of $55 million to our citizens. Council was repeatedly told by staff and attorney the following week they could change the tip, and they never did so. Council knew as early as April 16th, as you can see in the slide, and public hearing as well, that STCA had submitted its pre-application and was working on its concurrency test. Yet despite being reportedly several times that they was doing, they never did. Could it be because three members of the council told Mickey Mueller on August 19th the Town Center project would never pass concurrency testing as a result of the new standards adopted? In other words, they had rigged the concurrency system so no one could pass it and violate state law and GMA. Given that the state has barred Seattle from...
Oh, thank you.
I don't see how you can continue these discussions on the...
Thank you, Mr. Valderrama.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all for public comment, and we'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Great, thank you. Thank you to those that called in this evening. Next, we have unfinished business. Tonight, I can actually go past the council calendar because we don't have one. Unfinished business. All right, so tonight, the first thing up is the ordinance, amending Section 2 of Ordinance 02020-501, imposing a six-month moratorium on the acceptance of certain applications for land use, development, and building permits of approvals written within the City of Sammamish to prohibit new applications for concurrency certificates under SMC Chapter 14A.10, and adding an exemption for education services using classified under SMC 21A.20.050A, providing for severability declaring an emergency and establishing an immediate effective date. Okay, so who would like to speak to this first? I'm going to leave this, I'm assuming, to... Okay.
Mayor, members of council. The question for the council tonight is should the council approve amendments to Ordinance 02020-501 in accordance with the direction given at the council regular meeting of May 5, 2020, to focus on prohibiting new applications for concurrency certificates? On April 20, 2020, the Growth Management Hearing Board reached a decision in the case of Don Jaren versus the City of Sammamish regarding the city's prior amendments to its transportation concurrency and level of service standards. The decision identified questions that need to be resolved by the city regarding growth and development. To give the city the necessary time to evaluate these questions, at the April 21, 2020 City Council regular meeting, the City Council adopted Ordinance 02020-501, implementing a six-month moratorium on all land use, development, and building permit applications, which went into effect immediately. The city revisited this topic during the regular meeting of May 5, 2020, to consider refining the types of activities covered by the moratorium, and directed staff to develop a new ordinance revising the moratorium to focus on restructuring, oh, excuse me, restricting new applications for concurrency certificates. Staff has drafted an ordinance implementing the council's direction, which is included in Exhibit 1, listed Option A. This ordinance focuses restrictions on development activity under the moratorium to new applications for concurrency certificate. Included in this draft ordinance is an exception for education services, which would allow schools to apply for a concurrency certificate, and subsequently, if a certificate is issued, a permit for development. Following the May 5, 2020 meeting, staff also identified the need to add two other similar exceptions for parks, utilities, and government facilities, as there are several pending projects related to city facilities that require permits. To accommodate these projects, an alternative draft ordinance that expands on the school exception has been included as Exhibit 2 or Option B for the council consideration. The only difference between Option A and Option B are the exceptions for park utilities and government facilities. So now, Mayor, I turn it back over to you. You have the Option A, Option B, and the proposed language. I wanted to add at this time and juncture, the memo that was distributed earlier today from legal counsel Lisa Marshall, that I asked her to put together based on some recommendations that she had, and a recommendation put forth by Councilman Ross to consolidate some of the language. So as we're considering these options, this would refer to language in Option B and substitute subsections 1, 2, and 3 under Section 2. So let me read the memo. The applicable language is found therein. "Councilmember Ross's suggestion to strike the exemptions listed in Option 2 and create one exemption for public agencies as defined in Sammamish Municipal Code, Section 21A.15.915, will make the moratorium much easier to administer than the original Option 2. Note that this revision will exempt all public agencies, including the city, public schools, water and sewer districts, East Side Fire and Rescue, and state agencies. ST3 is a regional transit authority under RCW 81.112, and so its park-and-ride project in the city will be exempt as well." Lisa also wrote, "The City Council may wish to consider..." It says proving, but I think she meant providing, "the city manager with the authority to use his discretion to 'make close calls,' in quotes. Adding the following sentence would accomplish this: 'The City Council hereby authorize the city manager to interpret this section and to apply such interpretations as necessary to further the objectives of this moratorium.'" Secondly, "There are two locations at state law which authorize moratoria. The first is in the Growth Management Act at RCW 36.70A.390, and this reference is currently included in the ordinance for tonight's consideration. The second reference is the Planning Enabling Act, RCW 35A.63.220. Both sections are nearly identical, with the former including additional language concerning forested areas and critical areas." Lisa writes, "In order to preclude a possible argument that we didn't cite to the correct RCW, I'd like to add them both," she writes. The sentence in Section 2 would read as follows, quote, "as authorized by the Growth Management Act, RCW 36.7A.390, and by the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act, RCW 35A.63.220, a moratorium is hereby enacted on the acceptance of applications for concurrency certificates." Lisa is available and in the meeting tonight virtually to answer any questions regarding that. And again, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for discussion with the council about the moratorium language.
First thing I'm going to ask is, do we have councilors that have got questions for our attorneys? I see people with questions here, but I need to know if they are for the attorneys. I'm going to go through... Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, mine's on a queue. A queue is for getting into the queue rather than a question. I was going to make a motion which would allow us to have deliberation.
Okay, I just want... Okay. That's fine.
Okay. So hopefully I'm going to get this right. I'd like to move Option 2 as put in our packet, Option B, excuse me. And I am going to, under Section 2 where it says "moratorium imposed," it currently states "as authorized by the Growth Management Act, RCW 35A.63.220," comma, and I'm going to add in the language that Lisa provided us, which was "as authorized by the Growth Management Act." Oh, she's got that, excuse me. After the comma, it would say "and by the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act, RCW 35A.63.220." And then it would go on as it states there, "a moratorium is hereby enacted on the acceptance of applications for concurrency certificates." The subsequent change I would like to make is the exceptions that are listed below as 1, 2, and 3, and I'd like to substitute in the language that Councilmember Ross came up with, which was "under public agencies as defined in SMC 21A.15.915."
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I believe that was Councilmember Trine.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And now for discussion. And I have got Councilmember Stewart.
Kristi, did you want to speak to your motion at all, or are you good?
I would, if you can give me just a second. I think this encompasses what we attempted to do last week, when we set forth to have staff draft up a revision to this ordinance. This is essentially packaged up with the exceptions that goes a little above and beyond just the schools that we added in, but also gives the city the flexibility for park-and-trail facilities. The education is classified under there as well. So it really is just about the concurrency certificates, which is what I think our goal was last week when we passed this. Thank you, Pam.
Yep. So I have a couple of questions. One, I guess, I'm still confused as to why I thought we did, in fact, pass this last week. So I'm curious why we had to have an emergency meeting to pass this again. And then the second concern that I have is that it was only at 4:18 p.m. that we received this new language, and I did write back a question to the city attorney asking how the two exceptions differed, and there are more differences. It isn't just that it's cleaner or simpler, there are more differences. So there are more things exempted and less things exempted from what was originally there, and I don't feel like I have had ample time to understand those differences since 4:18 p.m. today. So I'm not comfortable with the new language. I would like to figure out if we can keep the existing language. She did say that private utilities would not have exemptions for, what is it, for utility facilities, utility yards, or utility offices. I don't understand how that may or may not affect people in our city, but I think that during an emergency, if there are any kinds of utilities that need to be able to do things, I generally don't see those types of facilities as being a major impediment to our traffic problems and that they should be allowed to proceed. So I'm not comfortable with that new language. And I don't think that we should be changing things out two hours before the meeting and not having time to review or time to share it with the public.
Okay, thank you. I've got another question.
So, well, wait, I didn't get any answers to my question. Can I have an answer?
Well, I will, I'm going to let the attorney answer your question if you give me just a second. I was trying to see if I had another question for the attorneys here so they could answer it at the same time. Is there anybody else who has a question for the attorney, similar to that, so they can answer it together?
Yeah, I have a question, and I guess it would be along the same lines. I'm curious if what Councilmember Stewart stated, she obviously... Pam, if you see CJ, the council, on your response to the attorney.
I didn't, I was just trying to understand what the differences might be, so I just sent it off to Lisa. Again, we just didn't have time to have proper vetting of this new language, and so it makes me very anxious.
Okay, so Lisa, are you on?
I am, and I'd be happy to answer.
It seemed very straightforward to me, so perhaps you could answer it.
Sure, let me try to take the questions as they were posed in order. The reason that we had to have this special meeting is because while you had a discussion on various different options for your moratorium last week on the 5th, you did not adopt an amendment. An amendment has to be... Amendment to an ordinance must be adopted using the same process and in the same manner as the original ordinance. There was not a document in front of you that you actually adopted. So this meeting tonight is an attempt to do that and make that formal. Regarding the differences between the version of the moratorium ordinance that's in your packet and the recent revision, there is a difference between public and private utilities discussed within 21A.15, 452 through 1350. If you do not wish to have the moratorium apply to private as well as public utilities, that would be a fairly easy fix. In addition, the distinction between the two ordinances is that the version created by Councilmember Ross would apply to projects that are applied for by public agencies. So to the extent that a non-public agency, such as a private company, wanted to apply for concurrency certificate, they would not be able to do that.
And you specifically called out the farmer's market. So does a farmer's market require a concurrency certificate?
I'll refer that question to David Pyle or to Cheryl Paston. Sorry, David.
Sorry, I had to turn off or turn on my mic, turn off the mute on my microphone, so I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, great. So that question did come up in anticipation of this meeting, and we did some research, and we did come to the conclusion that based on the structure of the code, that because a farmer's market is not a physical improvement of the site, a permanent improvement, that it's typically temporary in nature, that it does not require a concurrency certificate. If you were to build an exclusive farmer's market where the site was designed for the farmer's market, and the farmer's market was in operation, more or less in perpetuity, around, you know, seven days a week, had hours of operation, then it would require a concurrency certificate. However, the type of farmer's market that the code envisions is subordinate and supplemental to existing uses, like a civic use, a city hall, if you will, or a park, and therefore goes along with that use.
Got it. And do we have any private utilities in the city that we should ensure we have an exemption for if they needed a, what is it, a utility yard or facility or office?
Well, I never say never, but I am not aware of any private utility office that would require that type of permitting that we have currently where there would be a concurrency certificate needed for some type of improvement.
Okay, and they're like facilities or yards or anything that they might need?
Not for a private utility that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean that a small one somewhere on the corner of the city does not exist. I'm just not aware of one.
Would... I don't know what the recommendation would be, but again, I feel like we haven't had time to flesh this out. Would that be an exemption we should consider putting in here so that we don't... If there is some sort of a utility emergency, we aren't blocking someone from doing something?
You know, I think most of the utility yards that we have in the city are public utilities, water and sewer, city utilities, so I don't really see it coming up. So I don't know that there's any advantage to adding it, although at the same time, it wouldn't hurt, because if there aren't any and you added an exemption for it, and there aren't any, then we would never see it used, but if we needed it, it would be there.
Great, then I'd like to... Well, one last question for Lisa. Are there any other differences between the wording? Kristi, I'm assuming that's your dog. There we go. Are there any other differences between the wording that we were given on Friday evening and this new Option 2 language?
I believe I pointed the main differences out in my email, and the rest of the council, my apologies. I sent it to Councilmember Stewart at 6:19, and will be happy to forward it to the rest of you as well. Dave Rudat also has a copy of that email. And the additional... And the additional, the additional language that we're proposing regarding the city manager's authority to exercise certain discretion to make interpretations is a suggestion that I've made over having done numerous moratoriums over the years where it's impossible to contemplate each and every scenario that might arise during the course of the moratorium, that it's kind of necessary to have that sort of safety valve so that some discretion can be exercised. And I know that's not a specific answer to your question, Councilmember Stewart, but staff has done its best to identify the differences between the version in your packet and the version on the dais tonight, and it's possible that something will come up that requires that interpretation.
That's right. And then there's nothing else that the previous language exempted that the new language would not? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, the new language, fair to say, the new language is really oriented towards the entity that's a proponent of the project. So the public agency here is the entity that would have an application in for a project. The way it was written before, it exempted out specific projects that we were aware of that needed to go forward. And this is a little cleaner and simpler to execute simply because it's shorter and because it's oriented toward the proponent or the applicant.
Okay, great. Thank you. I guess, I guess I'm kind of okay with it. I just, I feel like it isn't, it isn't the best path forward to be making changes like that, you know, two hours prior to the meeting, and I feel like it's, I'm sorry, Mayor? I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have something to say there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just saying that it makes me uncomfortable when we make changes like that, and I feel like it's not the most transparent that we could be as a government agency. So I'll just go on record as saying that I prefer that we not be making these kinds of changes on the fly if we can avoid it. Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else? Let me look here for comments. Deputy Mayor, did you have another comment?
Nope.
Okay, and I think that Councilmember Stewart, I think the rush on that, but mostly I think it was your concern was regarding the farmer's market, and I think that that was answered. So I think, hearing no other comments, I'm going to call for the vote, and I'm going to use the list as we did last time, because Councilmember Ritchie came up with that, and it worked pretty well. So I'm going to go down the order. Calling for the vote on ordinance, and the number of the ordinance is 02020502, and changed as per Deputy Mayor. Do you need to repeat it for the record? Does she need to repeat it for the record? Okay. Deputy Mayor, could you repeat the changes that you want for the record?
So in section two, where it says moratorium imposed, and afterward it states RCW 35A dot 63 dot 220, I would like to add in, and by the Planning and Zoning Act, comma, RCW 35A dot 63 dot 220. Nope, that's the wrong, is that the right one? Sorry, I'm comparing notes here. As authorized by the direct management act, RCW 36 dot 70A dot 390, and by the Planning and Zoning Enabled Act, RCW 35A dot 63 dot 220, as stated by the city attorney in the email from today, as well as the substitution Councilmember Ross suggested, which was singular exemption for public agencies as defined in SMC 21A dot 15 dot 915.
I believe that's correct. You stated 35A sixty-three dot two-two-zero.
Yes, and 36 dot 70A dot 3.
Yep, that's correct. Okay, going down, Deputy Mayor Malchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Trinh?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Six, one. Gosh, we might get out of here early, you guys. Number two, I'm not going to say that, I'm going to knock on wood here. Number two on our agenda this evening is ordinance amending municipal code subsection 20 dot 05 dot 040 dot 1, aye, to correct code sections and to correct terminologies citations providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effect of date. And I'm going to have, you're going to take it? All right.
The question, should the council approve corrective amendments to code references and terminology in the SMC 20 dot 05 dot 040, perens 1, perens L, related to concurrency certificate requirements for complete applications for development? Upon incorporation in 1999, the city adopted Sammish Municipal Code titles 14 and 20 through passage of ordinance 099 dash 29. Titles, title 14 SMC as adopted under the ordinance 099 dash 29 included SMC chapters 14.15, Transportation Concurrent Management, which is in exhibit 2. SMC title 20, as adopted under ordinance 09929, included SMC chapter 20.05, Procedures for Land Use Permit Applications, Public Notices, Hearings, and Appeals, which is exhibit 3. Historically, and since its initial adoption, SMC 20 dot 05 dot 04, perens 1, perens L, see exhibit 3, has required submittal of an approved traffic impact analysis from the director or his designee if required by chapter 14.15 SMC, see exhibit 2. Similarly, historical SMC 14.15 point 020, perens 1, required application for traffic impact analysis prior to the application for development approval, see exhibit 2. Within the same chapter, SMC 14.15 point 050, perens 1, as seen in exhibit 2, historically established that a traffic impact analysis approved by the director or designee created rebuttable presumption that the development proposal satisfies concurrency requirements and that the determination of concurrency shall be final at the time of development approval. SMC 14.15 point 060, perens 1, also established that after September 1, 1999, an approved traffic impact analysis was required with an application for the development as opposed to a concurrency certificate, which was to be issued with the permit approval, see exhibit 2. Under this generation of code, see exhibit 2 and exhibit 3, to have complete application for a development permit and approved traffic analysis, a TIA, was required. At the same time, a traffic impact analysis was inherently the same as a concurrency certificate due to the rebuttable presumption stated in the SMC 14.15 point 050, perens 1. During the same time, excuse me, during this time, SME title 14A had not yet been created. To have a complete application under this generation of rules required an approved impact analysis if required by SMC chapter 14.15. In 2004, the city passed several ordinances related to concurrency and traffic management that created SMC title 14A. See this in ordinance 02004 dash 138, ordinance 0204 dash 139, and ordinance 02004 dash 140. In bold, at the same time, SMC title 14 was not modified and was not repealed. Further, SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, was also not updated to correctly reflect complete application submittal requirements associated with the traffic impact analysis or concurrency certificate. Because SMC title 14 was not repealed or modified with the creation of SMC title 14A, a disconnect within the code affecting application of SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, see exhibit 4, exhibit 5, and exhibit 6. The addition of new SMC title 14A in 2004, see exhibit 5, without the concurrent deletion or repeal of the old SMC title 14, which is SMC title 14 remained unchanged in 2004 with when SMC title 14A was created, see exhibit 4, and without concurrent update to SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, remained unchanged in 2004 with the additional of, the addition of SMC title 14A, see exhibit 6. Created the code inconsistency due to incorrect terminology and incorrect code reference that is now under evaluation by the city council, see exhibit 1, proposed draft ordinance. To have a complete application under this generation of rules still required an approved traffic impact analysis if required by SMC chapter 1415, and it was unclear, based on the code changes in 2004, perens where SMC title 14A was added and perens, if this intended to replace this requirement with the newer requirement that an applicant obtain an approved concurrency certificate, see SMC 14A dot 10 dot 020. This presented two sets of rules attempting to regulate the same topic. Several years went by following the addition of SMC title 14A in 2004, where SMC title 14 remained in the code, see exhibit 7 and exhibit 8. Further, the reference to approved traffic impact analysis as opposed to approved concurrency certificate and to SMC 14.15 as opposed to the newer SMC 14A dot 10, which are complete application requirements in SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, remained, see exhibit 9. Then, in September of 2018, as part of the Public Works Department work on overhauling traffic management systems, title 14 SMC was repealed with the passage of ordinance 02018 dash 465. At the same time, SMC systems, title 14 SMC was repealed with the passage of ordinance 02018 dash 465. At the same time, SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, was amended, see exhibit 12, with the passage of ordinance 0218 point 466, which changed the code citation listed in SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, from SMC 14 point 15 to SMC 14A point 15, see exhibit 12. With this code drafting effort, the letter A was simply added to SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, in error under ordinance 02018 point 466. The change made to SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, with ordinance 02018 dash 466 was incorrect and did not achieve the intent of the change. In bold, this was a code drafting error that needs to be corrected, see exhibit 1, draft ordinance. The reference that was mistakenly used, current SMC 14A point 15, governs the processing of street impact fees and does not include reference to a traffic impact analysis or related procedure for approval of such, see exhibit 11. Reference to, quote, "traffic impact analysis," unquote, found in the SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, was rendered obsolete upon the repeal of SMC title 14, see exhibit 10, and upon revision to SMC title 14A under ordinance 02018 dash 465. The change was made to SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, under ordinance 02018 point dash 466, created a cross-reference error by directing the code reader to SMC 14A point 15. The correct amended code section implemented with ordinance 02018 dash 466 cited in SMC 20 point 05 point 040 point 1, perens L, should have been SMC 14A dot 10, not SMC 14A dot 15. At the same time, changes made to SMC title 14A under ordinance 02018 dash 465 modified the terminology used as related to concurrency analysis. When the repeal of SMC 14 under ordinance 02018 dash 465, the term, quote, "traffic impact analysis," end of quote, and the associated rebuttable presumption procedure was made obsolete. For consistency with repeal of SMC title 14 and changes made to SMC title 14A made under ordinance 02018 dash 465, comma, amendment to SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, made under ordinance 02018 dash 466, should have also repealed and replaced the term "traffic impact analysis" with "certificate of concurrency" as the clear intent of SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L. The original SMC 14 point 15 and current SMC 14A dot 10 is to require traffic impact analysis or concurrency analysis as approval prior to submittal a development permit application for applicable projects. Recognizing the code drafting error, staff proposes to amend SMC 20 point 05 point 040, perens 1, perens L, to replace terminology used from, quote, "traffic impact analysis." perens L, to replace terminology used from, quote, "traffic impact analysis," to, quote, "certificate of concurrency," end of quote, and amend SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, to replace code citation used from, quote, "chapter 14A.115, SMC," end of quote, to, quote, "chapter 14A.10, SMC," end of quote. A draft ordinance amending SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, is attached as exhibit one for council consideration. While this long-standing draft, code drafting error, perens since 2004, with the creation of SMC title 14A, see exhibit four, exhibit five, and exhibit six, end of perens, wherein SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, has contained incorrect code citation and incorrect terminology, does present opportunity for applicants to attempt application without approved traffic concurrency certificate. We have not, perens, at least since November of 2015, end of perens, had an applicant present a case that they should have, that they should be able to submit application and be vested as complete projects without an approved traffic concurrency certificate. Based on the language currently found in the SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, see exhibit 12, an applicant could have attempted submittal without approved concurrency certificate and could have presented legal argument that approved concurrency certificate is not required for, for a complete application, therefore vesting. Our system is oriented at requiring an approved concurrency certificate, and we view that as a requirement. This reflected in our process and in the submittal requirements for applications where application for concurrency review and receipt of approved concurrency certificate is required before submittal of development application, perens, for example, see submittal requirements for a preliminary subdivision application. We have discussed this with legal counsel and have been informed that due to the structure of the code, the changes that were made in 2018, and the error in reference and terminology, that when considering the intent of the code, liberal construct and RCW 35A.21.010, and the, the city has a strong case that an approved concurrency certificate is a required submittal item in lieu of an approved traffic impact analysis. And we have a legal basis to determine an application incomplete for lack of approved concurrency certificate, thereby precluding vesting without an approved concurrency certificate. The rule of statutory construction would apply to the current language of SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, see exhibit 12, to interpret it such a way to avoid absurd results. It would produce an absurd result to ask an applicant to obtain a traffic impact analysis by directing the applicant to the chapter on impact fees. If presented with an argument by an applicant stating that traffic concurrency certificate is not required because of the current language in SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, we would have interpreted the current version of SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, as a requirement to obtain a concurrency certificate if required by SMC 14A.10, which is the most current and relevant section of the code, see exhibit 11. A draft ordinance amending SMC 20.05.040, perens 1, perens L, is attached as exhibit one for council consideration. Mayor, I'm going to give it to you. I've spoken enough for the balance of the year. Thank you.
Take a breath.
Impressive.
Yeah, that was good, wasn't it? I missed part of that if you wouldn't mind repeating it. Okay, council, we have, if I can get a motion so we can open this up for discussion.
I'm in the queue to make that motion. I would like to move that we adopt what is drafted as exhibit one, which alters 20.05.040 application requirements. This is number one, letter L, altering it from the reference from chapter 14.15 to 14A.10.
Do I hear a second?
Second, second.
I believe that was Councilmember Ross. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, now questions. So, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. So first, I have to thank David Pyle for working with me last Wednesday and tracking this all the way back to 2004. So thank you, David, for your time and energy on this. And yeah, I'm just, I'm happy that this was discovered and that we can fix this dating back from, again, all the way back to 2004. And then again, our ordinance that we drafted, adopted for currency back in 2008. So that's really just what I wanted to say on the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just, so first of all, I do want to thank the interim city manager. That was an impressive reading of a lot of information. And I just want to, again, for clarity for the public, because, well, actually, first I want to say that next year, you really don't have to get me anything for Mother's Day. This was way more than enough. Thank you so much for that. 273 pages, I think that was. But in all seriousness, for clarity for the, for the public, please confirm that my understanding of reading through all of this is quite simply that we have a bad reference. So we, both way back when, in 2004, we had traffic impact analyses. We switched to requiring the running of concurrency tests and obtaining a concurrency certificate. The code was never updated properly to refer to requiring that concurrency certificate. And even recently, we referred to the wrong section of code, referring to traffic impact fees as opposed to the requiring of a concurrency certificate. Is that, is that, in fact, the only change that we are making? Is that we are just correcting the code to say, if you want to build something, you have to, in particular instances, you have to get a concurrency certificate instead of a traffic impact analysis?
I can answer that. This is David Pyle. The answer there is yes. That is exactly what is happening. And in fact, as a matter of practice, that is how we have been operating for several years already.
Perfect. And are there any, again, it sounds like this was, you know, caught, and that's great, and we're getting it corrected, but are there any other, will it change anything else? Are there any other potential unintended consequences? Or is it really just correcting that error so that if, if a concurrency certificate was already being required, it is now officially being required as opposed to the traffic impact analysis? And we're not sweeping something else into, into this that we don't intend to or that we haven't discussed?
We are not aware that we are sweeping anything into it. As far as we are aware, this is limited to changing a citation to correct an error in the code.
Terrific. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, council, do I hear any other questions or see any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Again, we're going to go through the row call, but I'm going to call for the question. And I'm going to start from the bottom this time. Councilmember Trine.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamlin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's a seven, zero. Awesome.
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Nobody's opposed. See you next week.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Good night.